Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight, Thursday, March 18th, 2021, our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. I ask that we call ourselves to order. We do have a forum and that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next section, which is additions and changes to the agenda. I just wanted to broach my fellow select people. Because of the fact, well, basically it's to ask Andy if he would be interested in going into executive session for the purpose of listing his many achievements of this last year, or if he would rather it be done at another time. I know a couple of weeks ago, or a few weeks ago, with the computer hiccup, he wasn't able to come in. So I don't know if he was even, you know, ready or whatever. I hadn't have a chance to talk to him. Or if the fellow select people at this point are concerned. So Andy, I'll let up to you to see what you want to say first. And then depending on your answer, I'll bring it up to the board.
I'm fine. I think there was an article in the paper. I appreciate the increase in the bonus. It's very generous. It's out there. I don't know what more to be said. I'm fine. I appreciate the opportunity to be invited in, but I'm good.
Good, perfect. Unless anybody has anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I go along with that. I think, I think we, we discussed this all last week. Two weeks ago, that is. And there isn't really anything else much to say at this point. So I go along with taking that out of the agenda.
Okay, perfect. Okay, our next section is our public comment. Or, yes, public comment. Make sure I follow my sheet here. Donna, if you would please state your verbiage for how people could do their public comment if so desired.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everyone. There's an opportunity for public comment at the beginning and the end of the meeting. If anyone wishes to make a public comment, if they could just jot down their name and comment in the chat box, and you will be recognized. And right now, there are no public comments. Thank you.
Okay. Well, and again, anyone who does wish to comment does have the availability at the end of the meeting to also have a public comment at that point in time. So I, moving on, I guess, would be our good to know. And I'll turn it over to Andy.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Larson. So tonight for good to know, we had already had this in the works. So with us, we're happy underneath the Hebron Business Spotlight and Public Service Announcements, we have with us Tressa from our AHM Youth and Family Services. And she's going to discuss, I think, a small, also a small presentation of Health Matters. So with that, Tressa, I'll turn it over to you. And you can introduce yourself and take it away.
Great, thank you, Andy. Yep, I'm Tressa Giordano, Director over at AHM. And thank you so much for inviting me to talk about this program. We're really excited to continue with it. We've had great success with it through the past year. So I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully that will work and you guys will be able to see this. About a little over a year ago, we applied for a grant through the Cigna Foundation to create a health and wellness program for residents of the four towns that we serve. And Cigna was so helpful in helping guide our efforts. They were supportive of the vision that we had. And we were thrilled to receive a three-year grant to put this all together. On COVID kind of changed the rollout of the program somewhat. Obviously, some of the in-person health and wellness activities that we had planned, we couldn't do this fall. But I commend my staff for being able to pivot and innovate and make this program happen despite the challenges of the pandemic. In a nutshell, the Health Matters Program was created to focus on health and wellness activities for our entire community. So activities that any age group could participate in. And we focused on three phases. The self, the family, and then the community. And so within those three phases, a variety of activities to help support mental health, physical health, emotional well-being were planned through each phase. So like I mentioned, in the fall, we went all virtual, which was successful. And then our second phase, we decided to have all of the information easily accessible through an online video platform. So when you go to the AHM page and you go to our mega menu and then click Health Matters and scroll down, you will see a variety of videos that folks can access 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we've tried to organize them in three categories of movement, self-care, nutrition, art, and then our eating healthy section. So a big part of what we wanted to accomplish is accessing local instructors, on local presenters, and with especially our support in local business, our local restaurants. So these videos have been very successful over the past about seven weeks now. We started posting these videos right after the new year. And we felt that having the videos accessible 24 hours a day, seven days a week, was really important in the pandemic because we found it was sometimes hard for people to attend a Zoom meeting. We had people register and have, you know, the best intentions to attending, but, you know, with COVID, just sometimes things come up and it's hard to get onto those Zoom meetings where these videos can be accessed any time of day. And we've been tracking the usage and the engagement. And we've been very, very happy and pleased that so many people have taken advantage of these small and short videos. And that's the other thing that we found is people may not have the interest of sitting down and watching a 20-minute video, but something that's 10 or 15 minutes, or some of our videos are even shorter, five minutes. People were more likely to engage with with short videos. So we're really excited about the diversity of videos that we have here. Everything from nutrition, like I mentioned. We've got, you know, Mission Wellness in Colchester that's done some fitness videos, local yoga instructors doing videos. Even myself, I jumped in to do some. An art teacher from Ram did a sketching video. So all of these activities are just a way that you can kind of put some new tools in your toolbox to help you with keeping yourself healthy mentally and physically. Brendan, our prevention coordinator, did a great video on the variety of trails and hikes that we have in our four towns. So that's really nice. You can watch that and kind of see what's offered. So while we were putting all these together, I think since, I don't know, I feel like it was since May perhaps, I've been a member of the Hebron Open for Business Task Force. And through their support and just the goal of helping promote local businesses, we came up with this concept of highlighting our local restaurants, but keeping in mind our Healthy Matters mission, and highlighting each restaurant, showing folks that our local businesses are not only wonderful and supportive of our residents, can go into these restaurants and
Looks like Tressa's freezing up a little bit. Is everybody else getting the same?
Yes, yes, I was just going to comment. Lost our volume or lost our audible.
I don't know if it's her internet, where she's at, I'm not sure.
Choose wonderfully delicious, healthy meals and keep your health goals in check while still promoting and supporting local businesses. So these videos are on our Facebook. And though you watch those videos, you'll see Element Unity get involved as well. A really long time. Is that better? We're hoping that Phase Three of Health Matters will be able to be in person. We're working really hard to get the AHM staff fully vaccinated. So hopefully by May and June, we'll be able to offer these Health Matters programs, obviously COVID-safe, but back in our building at AHM. During this year, we've renovated a space in our building that will support a lot of these Health Matters programs. So we're really excited that we had the opportunity to do that. So when we can reopen, we'll have a nice space to do that. So that is our Health Matters program. And we just thank the town of Hebron for being so supportive and promoting it. We love working with the Hebron Open for Business Task Force and being able to support their efforts as well. On our Facebook page, you know, we have more of those Health Matters videos. Michael Casper did a phenomenal video. It's almost like a mini documentary on the Health Matters Program and how it supports our local businesses. So be sure to check that out, too. So it's just been a great opportunity to engage so many different folks within the community and help those during during the pandemic. So we're just honored and grateful for the support of our town, for the funding through the Cigna Foundation. And we're excited to move forward the next two years through this this opportunity.
Thank you, Tressa.
You guys do great work, Tressa. Thank you very much for sharing that.
Thank you, guys.
If I may ask, Dan Larson, if I may ask, for those of us who may not be really on Facebook, how would we go about finding out about some of these programs?
Yeah, you don't, you don't have to be a social media user. All of these videos are right on our website. So ahmusearth.org is our website. Click through. And then when you click on our menu, you know, this is all of our services and programs that we offer at the agency. But you can just click right here to Health Matters, and that's going to bring you to that Health Matters page with all of those program updates, as well as all of those videos that we've put together throughout the past eight weeks.
Beautiful, thank you. Anybody have any other questions?
John Collins, I trust them. Thank you so much. You do a tremendous job. AHM is so great for Hebron.
John, I appreciate that. I have to say, I am so proud of our staff. You know, this year, like, like so many of us, we've really been challenged with the pandemic and, you know, meeting the needs of our residents. But, you know, I have a staff that is just so committed to the work that they do and are passionate. And everything they do is with with care and empathy and intention. And so I have to give them the credit of their ability to be creative, innovative during some very tough times.
Kudos.
Thank you, thank you very, very much for that presentation.
You're welcome. I don't know how to get them.
Okay. Moving on, our next section is our appointments and resignations.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, attached is a letter from Mr. William Witt, resigning his position on the Commission on Aging. And there's a proposed motion.
I'll read the motion. Move, move with the Hebron Board of Selectmen, accept William Witt's resignation from the Commission on Aging with regret and thanks for his many years of dedicated service to the town of Hebron. Yeah, so that'll open it up for discussion. And I'm sure that Gail would like to say something.
Absolutely. Bill has, like his wife Deb, has been a wonderful asset to the community. He's been active in the Hebron Interfaith, which he's also resigning from at this time. But those are the kind of people that we need. They spend many, many years working hard for the town, and they're hard to replace.
I would just like to add to that. I've had the distinct pleasure of knowing the Wits, both Bill and Debbie. And I'm just trying to figure out how long. I'm going to say 40, 40-something years. I've known them and they've always been just incredibly good people, community-oriented. And I'm happy to see that, that, you know, they're able to move on with their lives. It will be a loss for Hebron. But I'm hoping they'll be able to spend more time together and spend more time with their grandchildren. But, you know, people like that are just hard to lose from any border commission. And so without further ado, all in favor of the motion, say a five by saying aye. Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Wychman, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Our next is we actually have an appointment. And I'll read the motion. Andy, did you want to say anything first, or?
Well, we have our person here today attached with a letter from Catherine Littwen, Republican, expressing her interest in being appointed as an alternate member to the Commission on Aging. Hi Catherine.
Hello, everyone.
Good day. I'll read the motion, then I'll turn the floor over to you, Catherine, if you want to say anything.
Okay.
Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to appoint Catherine Littwen as an alternate of the Commission on Aging to a term to run until December, to run until December 2023. Turn it over to Catherine.
Well, nice to see everyone. I'm a retired registered nurse. And in the 42 years that I've worked, I've done a lot of work in the geriatric population. And I've always enjoyed that. I've lived in Hebron 14 years now in the village of Loveland Hills. So as most of you probably know, that's a 55 and older active adult community. So I'm living amongst that population. I've done pre-COVID, I've done a lot of volunteer work at Colebrook and plan to do that when we're allowed back in. I've served four years on the Andover Hebron Columbia Marlboro Hunger Action Team. And spend a lot of time at the senior center. I'm very enthusiastic about making Hebron the best place to live and thrive. So I would enjoy an appointment to that commission.
Okay, any other comments? I know I would like to make a comment. I've actually known Catherine, you know, for a little while through their church and all. And I can't think we could have a better person to serve, you know, whether or not as an alternate or as a full-fledged member. I think it is a win-win for the town of Hebron. And I fully support her position as an alternate on that commission. And I think she will bring a lot of good skill sets that will help on that board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You are welcome.
Chairman, I'd like to echo that. I don't know Catherine, but after listening to her assets there, I think she's going to be a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful asset to the Commission on Aging. We're looking for you to get on the liaison from the Board of Selectmen to the Commission on Aging. And I'm looking forward to seeing you be an active member.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Kathy, I don't know you either, but it's nice to meet you. I'm glad you want to do this and volunteer. All of us over 65 can appreciate all the support and and good thoughts and expertise that we can get. So I'm anticipating you're going to pass easily, and I welcome you aboard.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Peter? Yeah, thank you so much. We, I think we struggle in the town sometimes, towns like ours, getting enough good people like you to step up and volunteer. So thank you very much for your willingness to continue to serve the community and embrace the community. And it's people like you that make this community what it is and what we, why we all love to live here. So thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Moving along, and I have a feeling you have an idea what what the vote's going to be. Moving along, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Wychman, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. You will be getting a letter from the town so that you can go in, talk to Carla. And I believe that, yes, Andy?
I just, to get sworn in. She needs to get sworn in. I was hoping you were going to remind her of that.
Yeah, so she'll be getting a letter, and then you'll have to go in and see Carla, and you'll get sworn in.
Okay.
I, can she go at any time after this meeting? Or does she have to wait for that letter to come?
We'll get the letter right out. The beginning of next week would be better and make an appointment call up so we know when she's coming to meet her and do that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, perfect. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Welcome. Moving along, our next topic is our Town Managers Report.
Okay, Mr. Chairman and fellow selectmen. So today we had our Region Eight Insurance Consortium, which I've chaired for many years. And I feel like I can boast a little bit about this. We're finally at the point where we wanted to be when we went self-insured. We're got our, our increase down to 1.4% for this year. So that's lower than the number that Ram, Hebron, and the town of Hebron has been carrying. So we should see a reduction in all three entities moving forward. So that's great news. We went self-insured. We've got enough money in the bank to cover us. So we're coming with a 1.4. I think we originally had 3.3, but our trend, our loss ratio keeps running really good, better, better than it's been in a long time. So I'm not sure if that's all or some part of that I'm sure is due to COVID. But we've taken it into account and setting this so we don't have a big jump next year. But we voted today to come in at a 1.4, and I think that's great news. And you're going to see a reduction. So we're very proud of that. As I stated earlier, we were busy today after the insurance meeting. We went into the interviews for a new fire chief. We'll be setting up a second interview next week and hopefully have a final candidate to bring forward to the Board of Selectmen at their first meeting in April for appointment. And we're working on reopening of the town offices. The governor is looking to relax the regulations as of tomorrow. We had planned to have a staff meeting on Monday, and I'm hoping to get in touch with all the department heads. We're trying to get everybody vaccinated. So we're shooting for the Monday, which would be April 6th, to open the buildings, get everybody ready, make sure all the protocols are in place and what we need to do. We'll be working with the Chatham Health District. But the date that's set right now is April 6th. Another milestone, at least in our, our building, is we should have an audit next week. It's been like an 18-month-long process. The last audit was such a nightmare, we ran right into this year's audit with a new auditor. And there's been a lot of different changes that we had to incorporate and a lot of different assignments we had to do that we hadn't had to do in the past. So it'll be really good to get that off our plate, that'll free up our finance department to do their normal work and help out in some of these other, other areas. So I'm glad and happy to report that. I'm also working with the superintendent at the Hebron Elementary School on his CIP projects, also the roof projects that he has. And we're employed the building committee. So we had our first meeting regarding that. And then we're moving forward. He's excited and happy with the wealth of knowledge that they're bringing with them. So that was a good meeting. He's also looking at some HVAC and air handler projects. And that also would be through the Hebron Building Committee. Along the same lines, we find, we finished, the HVAC work is done at the Douglas Library. It's under review by the Building Committee. We have the ASBells. Next, we're moving forward. We're going to be looking at the roof project. We hired that consultant that came back with some recommendations. I'm working with the Building Committee to see which one best fits the town. And we'll be coming back to you with a request. And there's still some balancing of the building of the HVAC and air handlers. That'll be done, but that can't be done until mid-spring when the weather changes. So that's scheduled. And that'll also, that data will be supplied to the Building Committee as well. I'm actually working with the Ram Board on some code issues with Randy. They had a four-year inspection. It's a new code underneath the Fire Marshal side. And the firm they brought in there did a lot of measuring. And there's a lot of recommendations and in a total of $200,000 worth of improvements. But with my expertise through myself and the state Building Officials' Office and the Fire Marshal's Office, I think we can apply with the state for a modification and see if we can't get that down considerably. That's a lot of money. So we're going to be working on that. I had a conversation this afternoon about that with both the superintendent and the firm that the state of Connecticut recommended. We're, WPCA, they had their first walk-through that was scheduled today with the company that was hired, Holzner. But due to the weather, it was rained out. So the first kickoff meeting and walk-through will be next week. It's rescheduled. And then we should have, they'll have weekly meetings and updates after that. As Tressa's now gone, and Dan, you know as well, I've been working very diligent with AHM to try to get that new agreement finalized. There's been some issues with the other towns. And I've kind of been the spokesman for that to try to, you know, circle the wagons and get them to come together and get this thing moved forward. I think hopefully we've finally done that. We can do that on Monday, but that's been months in the making. Of course, all the union contracts, we align those. So they're all due this year. So we're working with those and the town's attorney, labor attorney. So we're working with the Supervisors Union, the Parks, the Public Works, and the Town Hall Clerical Unions. So we're in negotiations with them. And also working on Brownfields Grants with the Town Planner. And Donna and I and our consultant are working on the new round of small cities grants. So hopefully we could get something approved, a project that you people would agree to move that forward. We're thinking, you know, possibly the Riskin Property and that elderly housing project to see if we can't try to get some monies for Hebron for that. But we'll, we'll bring that forward. That'll be your, your decision on that. And that's it. That's, that's enough for this week. Course budget, of course.
Perfect.
That's all I had.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a question?
Yes, John.
Well, thanks. Um, how much are we in with Douglas Live? Um, how much are we in with Douglas Library now with all the repairs? Because I know we're going to be spending $241,000 for a roof, I guess.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that information with me tonight, but I could, if that's a request, I can get that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, moving on to old, old business. I think you've already kind of covered A.
Yeah, I didn't mean to do that intentionally. I know that's a topic with the, that's what I've been working on with Friday coming around tomorrow with the governors. So yeah, that is the information. We're going to have a meeting on Monday with the town departments, and hopefully at Chatham Health, and let them know of our plans and make sure we have a reopening plan in place for April fifth. And hopefully that'll suffice. We will put that in the paper, and we'll make sure the buildings are clean, and everybody's going to practice the safety measures, and we're looking forward to opening the buildings.
Yeah, the only comment I will have is that I think it's pretty sad that, as far as I'm concerned, town hall staff and town, town staff in general, I feel are essential people. And to have to have them wait, you know, for the age brackets, I think is a disservice to the communities of the state. You know, these are way too important people. These are the people that basically manage the day-to-day operations of the town. And, yeah. It just, I just think that the state kind of made a mistake to not get them vaccinated before this point, myself. And anyway, so I'll get off that.
Donna had a great suggestion to me this morning. I had to get another COVID test, which I got back this afternoon. It's negative, so I'm good to go. But I was virtual all day, but Donna called me, and apparently AHM had made some sort of arrangements with the Chatham Health District to get those people vaccinated. So I'm going to jump onto that and see, find out who hasn't already had their test or has appointments as employees and see if we can help through the Chatham Health District. I'll do that tomorrow.
Perfect. That'd be great. That'd be great. Thank you. Okay, any other old business? Hearing none, moving on to new business. We have our draft agenda for the April first, two thousand twenty-one meeting. So again, as always, if anyone sees or whatever, anything that they need to get brought up on that, please get it, get it in so that it can make, make the lists. Our next section, April, does anybody have anything they want to add? Okay, any other new business? Okay, our consent agenda. These are, these are items that are considered routine in nature and may be voted on as a individual or as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request that the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. And what we have are the approval of the, of the minutes of March second, regular meeting budget workshop, March, wow, fourth, regular meeting. And I'm not seeing any tax refunds. So just those two items, I guess.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make some corrections to the March second minutes.
Okay.
Do it now?
Sure.
All right. I'm kind of fussy about the attendance thing, so understaffed present. Kevin Kelly was there. He was not listed. Under guests, we had a number of them which were omitted. Terry McManus, Heather Pettit, Caitlin O'Leary from the press. We had Sloan Brewster from the River East. And under the call to order, Mike McCormick was not present, and that should not be. He wasn't there. He's not listed as present. That should not be in there. It's just so long ago, I forgot. I think that was all I had on that. Yeah. Okay, that's it.
So make a motion that we approve the amended minutes of March second, two thousand twenty-one. We'll do that individually, and then we'll do March fourth. So this is for just the March second with the amendments as stated by Selectman Richmond. Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Caspar, aye.
Gail?
Gail Witchman, aye.
John?
Don Collins, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Next will be the approval of the March fourth, two thousand twenty-one, regular meeting minutes as posted. Wow, I almost forgot what I was going to say. Apologize for that. Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Caspar, aye.
Gail?
Gail Witchman, aye.
John?
Don Collins, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Next will be our liaison reports. Mark?
So the Board of Ed had a four-hour meeting on Monday, and as Andy probably knows, that they're trying to come up with a solution to give money back to the towns. Andy, did they finally solidify that, or are they still working on trying to get what the school wants and returning some of the money?
I think, I was with Eva and Scott Leslie today with the new insurance numbers. That should be a boost in the arm, but also I think they're meeting on Monday, this following Monday, and they're going to revisit that and hopefully come out with some changes. That should be in the positive.
Right, that's what they were working towards. So yours is a separate thing then, yeah. They're, they're working towards that, finding out, making the board members happy with getting what they need for the school, but still returning some money to the town, and it seems that, that's, that's where they're headed with that. Other than that, there's really nothing to report. They're struggling with the budget like we are. They talk even more than we do, Dan. Four hours per meeting.
I've been in those types of meetings, though. My problem is staying awake for four hours nowadays. That's another thing. We won't go there.
Okay.
Okay. Gail?
Okay, the Hebron Board of Ed, I just found out that Brendan Connolly came in second for the state future problem solvers in writing, and he will be going on to the national competition. So that's quite, quite an accomplishment for the town of Hebron.
Yes.
The Douglas Library, April is National Poetry Month, and the library is setting up a display in the library for this. As you know, we're trying to get the program off the ground for having a poet laureate. So this is, ties right in with that. And anybody who wishes has been, is invited to submit a poem to the library. The presentation is going to be held on April sixteenth by the son of the chief carver of Mount Rushmore. This is the eightieth anniversary for that. So that program will be April sixteenth at, at 1:00 P.M. Two years ago, I was out at Mount Rushmore, so it will be quite interesting to attend that program. The Senior Center, the Zero Isolation Program will start on March twenty-fourth. As you know, the staff there took that course for a while. The AHM Youth Chores Program will be available for yard work and other chores for those sixty and over. Anyone who would like that service should call the Senior Center to enroll. And that's my news for the day.
Thank you. Thank you. Peter?
Board of Finance was specific to the budget, and we've been participating in that, and the Parks and Rec did not meet since our last meeting, so nothing further to add there.
John?
Yeah, no news. My committees didn't meet.
Okay, and then myself, the fire department is moving ahead with their plant sale. So that will be, let me get it right. That will be Thursday, the first, Friday, the second, Saturday, the third, the weekend before Easter. And it will be held at Company One Firehouse like it's been done in past years. They are working on how to possibly set things up a little differently to try to maintain, you know, the, the distance, the six-foot distance requirements. But they are going to have the Easter plant sale, so that was good news. So another, another thing returning to normalcy. And then Hebron Historic Properties, they've been getting information from the current owner of the Dick Gale home. And they received a letter from, from those individuals stating what they're planning, and it, it sounds exciting. You know, they got one definite business. It looks like possibly two other businesses are going to be moving in. And it's, possibly apartments at, at a coming phase. It'll be like Phase Three and another new building. So it's, it's coming together, and it appears, from what I can remember of the charrettes that we had done, like it's going to be following the programs that had been discussed, you know, during that, that series when we had had, you know, UConn coming in. So all very, very positive. And then, of course, you saw the inside of the Peters' house at the Board of Finance meeting. You know, so that's coming, and hopefully very soon be able to open that up so people can go through that structure. You know, it's, it's a town gem, and so things are moving along very positively with that. I think that's all I've got at this time. We do not have executive session tonight, so our next would be our public comment. And so again, turning it over to Donna. Anything, anybody out there wishing for any kind of public comment?
There are no indications of public comment at this time.
Okay, we'll give it a little minute for people to type into that chat box. Donna sometimes is going to just record her, her little statement there, and that way all she has to do is just play, play it back. Okay. With no other public comment, I would make or ask for a motion for adjournment?
At seven forty-five, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn and congratulate ourselves on a short meeting.
Some.
Yes, we're fishing tonight.
We try hard. We try hard. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Tomorrow. Good night.